Massachusetts. Acts in compliance with chapter forty eight under the.
John, John, hey, John Flynn, all I can hear is you talking. Please. I all I can hear is. Okay, well, it's very distracting.
The planning board is established under chapter forty of the general laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance as chapter forty A. Under the zoning bylaws of the town of Handen, chapter forty one governing the submission and approval of plots proposed subdivisions. And the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hamden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August fourteenth at six P M. In the townhouse. Six twenty five Main Street, Hamden, Mass. On the application of Daniel. Budrow for a special permit under section. Six point one, six point one, one, one of the Handen zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a private garage. Which exceeds an aggregate area square footage, which is more than one half. Ground floor area of the main dwelling, including any attached garage at the Budrow residence. Located at seventy five South Road. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public. During normal business hours. For the board Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hand and Planning Board, published in the Wolverham Hamden Times, July twenty fifth and August. First, twenty twenty four. Uh, the town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to date. The police chief Scott B. Tremblay reports he has no concerns. Um. And this is being recorded. Record. So if you would like to present. Your petition?
Hi, um, I'm Dan Budrow, seventy five step road. I'm here to give permission to build a garage, which is. Half of square footage of the. Ground floor of. Um, it's. A couple copies here.
They have everything that's submitted. I gave them.
Okay. Um. The main dwelling of the house, main of first floor, which is the hundred and seventy one square feet. The porch, which is one hundred and seventy five square. And then giving you a total of sixty or six. Which is. Less. Square footage of the garage is more than half of that. So. That's right. Um. I'm not going to build a thirty by forty four garage with a twelve foot lead two on the forty four foot side. I have plans here. Better ones are always available if you want to see it. Also printed out more flat lands to show the surrounding areas.
Can I see that one?
Size of. A nickel. Lot. This is a. Twenty twenty three view. So there's a forty acre farm to the right of me. There's a thirteen acre strip of forest behind me. Everyone's behind myself and the neighbors down the hill, who also have five acres. There's a. Horse farm across the street. So it's kind of a nice. Farmy area of the town. Um, I want to build this to look like a barn, so it'll fit into the surroundings. Yeah.
You over the years, you. But rebuilt the home that was there.
Correct. When I bought it, yeah.
Yeah.
Started remodeling and then got into. Going all over.
Yeah, sort of from the inside out, right? You've got to go. Yeah.
Um, as far as other buildings that are there, there's a wall of an arm still there that's falling over. And then there's a shed. Um, there is multiple other includes and small sheds, non properties that are still on the public records. I'm going to keep the one shed and then build the bigger ones.
You know. Or sheds listed, one lead to one garage.
There's six other buildings.
Yeah.
Records.
Yeah. So so it's other sheds. Four. Yeah, it says.
So there's the one. Which is. Two. Forty feet over. Um. And then the other lean twos and stuff, I believe, was sort of recorded while we were still in between the shed and the barn. Over the years, but that's.
So you got to update that. In other words, you don't have those sheds anymore.
Not all, just the one I'm going to keep. The barn is there, but that's going to go, the barn's going to, the one shed's going to stay and. Hopefully.
So the one shed, um, you got a dumpster at the house now. In front of, is that the shed you're going to keep?
No, that's just a temporary storage container that I just brought over there this week so I could get all my stuff. That can be in the barn that's there.
The barn is going to stay. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, you're okay. Yeah.
Also have another printout showing the broken back with the hundred foot. Bucket dome.
And what I what I'm seeing here, we're going to. Uh, plenty of room off your side setbacks for.
Correct. To the to the right.
Feet.
Is seventy feet is the closest.
Yeah, and the shed where it's marked here. On that. That's. The switch here.
Yes. Definitely more.
Six point one. Seven point one, one, one. I don't have the page. Oh, that is.
When I'm putting a business in here in the future. So it's all just for personal.
For page forty. Six point one.
Gotcha. Right. I understand.
Up here.
Page forty. Huh?
Is there another law that's?
No, that's what they're they're looking at what you're requesting in the bylaws. They're just looking at the bylaw.
What's the use of the barn going to be for you, Dan? It's going to store?
Just. Store like that little shop in there.
Yeah.
Just talking about.
Have some old furniture.
Right.
Have an old truck. Never trucked.
Right. So no business application, just you using it personally. Yeah.
The way it takes me to do everything. Played a lot.
Right.
On my occupations.
Any other questions?
The housing, I know we talked about the size of the acres and I drive by up and down past Dan's. Home. Quite a bit every day, more than I wish I had to, but but now the house, the homes, the homes are. Quite a distance. The acreage is there and even the distance from your house to those houses to to Tom's and him's.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not close. Right.
Please, because I don't think anybody would really mind looking at a nicer barn that's not fall over.
Right.
With green tar sculpture.
Great. Any question?
Any person?
Any questions?
Uh.
Nope.
I move that we approve the special permit application. For Mr. Budrow, case twenty twenty four E. For an accessory barn that exceeds half the script for which is. Eight going.
I second that.
All in favor?
I.
Great. Okay.
You might need to. Other.
I'll type up the decision as I can. I have fourteen days, but I'll do it as soon as I can. File it and I'll send you a copy of it. It tells you when you can pick up the certified decision from the town clerk. And then you're clear. There's a twenty day tail period after on the twenty first day you can pick up the decisions. And then you can. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate. Ah, yes.
One down.
Congratulations.
You go, Dan.
Um, I move we close uh the public hearing for case twenty twenty four E.
Second that.
All in favor?
I.
Or F. Okay. 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 Okay.
Be moving on to the second public hearing.
Yes.
All right. So this is case. Twenty twenty four F. And planning board members Madison Pixley, Chair Christina Brodeur, Pat Coin, David Demers, and John Matthews. Did you unmute that? Yeah. Um, statement of authorities, the planning board is established under chapter forty eight of the general laws of Massachusetts. And acts in compliance with chapter forty A under the zoning bylaws of the town of Handen. Chapter forty one governing the submission and approval of plots of proposed subdivisions. And the rules and regulations are governing the subdivision of land in Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hamden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August fourteenth at six twenty P M. In the townhouse. Six twenty five Main Street, Hamden, Mass. To amend the zoning bylaws of the town. By substituting the term select board for board of selectmen, then. And then select board members for the word selectmen. In each and every place, either one appears in the zoning bylaws and the subdivision rules and regulations. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review. By the public during normal business hours for the board Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hand and Planning Board. Published in the Wolverham Hamden Times on July twenty fifth and August first, twenty twenty four. Um, no reports received from other town departments or agencies. So. Do you have a presentation to make or I think I kind of covered it?
It's pretty straightforward. Um. The government study committee basically felt that this was. Just a matter of bringing us up to date. Um. That. The uh. The town is having a hard enough time getting people to volunteer for positions and to run for selectmen. And it just looked like more neutral wording was is logical. Uh, it didn't seem controversial to us, but um. When I actually went through and counted the number of places where selectmen appears. It's actually very few in the town bylaw. In the zoning bylaw, it's all over the place.
Yes, it is. Every tab. Was it twenty seven spots or something?
Thirty eight or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. That's basically all I have to say, but feel free to ask questions.
I don't have any questions.
Is this change mandated by the state?
No. Yeah.
It's just a town choice. It's a choice that the towns can make, right?
Exactly.
Nobody's.
Which is why, you know, town council for one. One down. Uh. They can, you can name it anything you like.
Okay.
Oh, we can give them any name we want?
They may not appreciate it.
We are incredibly enthusiastic about.
I.
My doubt.
I know.
They call me a lot of things.
I, if I may, um. I was on the committee also. They worked. It was a good committee. They worked very, very hard. Um. And. I think.
It's a good question.
The thought process behind this. As Eric said, was, you know, to try and bring it up to. And a more modern standard, if you will. Um. There has been. Comments made to me that uh doesn't matter and to the effect that. Um, it should stay as selectmen. And, you know, I I don't have any problem with selectboard. So um I've heard it all. Um, and if you look at the trend. Of the map. Um, hundred and eighty seven. You know, for selectboard. Uh, board of selectmen is now a hundred and four. So the vast majority of the towns are moving to. Um, selectboard. And and like you said, Wolverham had just changed. So. I think it. Needs to go in front of the voters. Which it will. Um. And yes, it's a big task. Because planning their bylaw does. Have selectmen in that. Document quite often.
Any comments from the crowd?
The selectboard?
I'll start.
From our.
It's one for twenty years. Um. Again, I echo what John said. The we commend the work of the government study committee for what they've done. I mean. You look at the makeup of them, you have new people. On the committee, which is great. Uh, it may be bad for those who have both. Parents out at different meetings throughout the week, but.
That's.
But uh, you know, we think it's great. We have more people participate. Uh, I know we talk about the fact that this history involved in, you know, I knew. Obviously, all three of the people who served as selectmen. I think John, you know, Ginger, she was proud, right? Remember the war selects?
Yeah.
Judy Amber.
Yeah.
Mrs. Flodder. But I think Eric's point is correct. If we want to be more, I want to say inclusive. But resent, or you think better opportunity for people to participate. That this is what needs to be done. And it's nothing more than a title. It's an opportunity to serve, and we shouldn't put any perceived barrier in front of it. So again, we thank you for bringing it to our attention. I know I joked with you about it. It's the right thing to do with the citizens. We said, oh, it's a percentage, it's a percentage now, we're almost from up the corner of the city. We got a lot.
And we have a question.
Uh, so we have a question. If this goes through, would the Hand and Wetlands bylaw also have to be updated to reflect this change? Pretty sure it says selectmen in that bylaw as well. My guess is that everything, all our town documents.
That would be included in the bylaws. So it would automatically.
Yeah.
Well, the 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 wetland's bylaw. Is under the general bylaw.
Right. They got to do that.
The actual, I think what we decided to do is the actual warrant article will include.
Average reference.
Yeah, yeah. It'll include zoning and the general.
General bylaws.
Then town council suggests we do it that way because. The general bylaws only requires majority vote. The zoning bylaw requires a two thirds vote. So that. One voted one way, one voted the other way, you'd have. You know, let's say the two thirds voted in the pastor zoning. But the general bylaw pastor. You know, by the majority, that one vote. The general, we're going to have to change that, but we're going to change it. So it's. We're going to combine it to one warrant article which really required two thirds vote, saying that they voted for zoning, everything can change.
Right. But I think also you're you're referencing other documents in town, just like we talked about the subdivision.
Right. Right.
But those are under your purview.
Zoning.
They're in a meeting. I think there are. I know when my wife was chair of department, they had their own regulations, which reference the board selection.
Right.
But at their own meeting, they can modify them. There are wetland regulations that are under conservation commission. They can change at their own meeting.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we're going to. Change the signs or written like that. Obviously, the the office will change. But maybe a plaque that was awarded to.
Yeah.
We're not just changing all that. Nope.
So why does the general bylaws, is it? Majority and zoning is two thirds?
Then also because the forty eight requires.
Oh, okay.
And then the general bylaw is just a majority vote.
So as a combined, what does it need? Majority or two thirds?
Needs the two thirds vote. So it's all.
And we have no idea that it's going to get so complicated when we started because.
Blame Keith for that. Okay, so do we need to hear a motion to?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing. And yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
No. We just hold the public hearing. The motion's made at town. At a town meeting, right?
You have twenty one days by recommendation.
Right.
Oh, so. Well, I thought they recommended it to us.
Uh, statement first, uh, town resident, um, also happened to be a landowner and zoning attorney, but generally speaking, this is where you're going to make a recommendation at a town meeting.
Oh, so a verbal recommendation. Make a motion that we recommend this as part of the warrant article that all twenty twenty four.
I move that we recommend this change in verbiage to the. Um, October twenty twenty four town meeting, um, warrant.
To change.
It's twenty.
To change.
To.
From selectmen to selectboard.
Yeah. Matt Johnson.
And from selectboard to board of select.
Yeah.
No, to select. It's going to be.
Selectmen to selectboard.
Right. It'll be selectboard.
Yes.
What's in the legal notice? I'll put. Yeah. It's um.
I second that.
What is it?
It's substituting substituting the term select board for board of selectmen and then select board members for the word.
Yes.
Selectmen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, I also move we close public hearing for case twenty twenty-four F.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for comments. Who's presenting?
Give my best.
Please, I would ask.
Hey, Eric, are you going to present that at the town meeting?
Somebody will.
Somebody will.
One, somebody from, somebody from government study, well, though?
Yeah.
May be adopted, amended, or repealed by a majority vote at any annual town meeting.
It's the general bylaw.
It's the general bylaws.
Okay.
So it may not be legal to actually have this motion or change in the general bylaws at the special town meeting.
Right, annual town meeting.
At the way to the spring.
Spring town meeting.
Now, your, your recommendation can still be good. Probably don't have to do it again.
We do the zoning at the special.
Because that gets into your fear about what changes, the other ones not. But if the zoning passes, then it'll be pretty obvious you will get to the general bylaw. It'll only need fifty percent. You're just saying, I've been to an uptown meeting, Eric.
Check with town. That's actually only do it at one.
But my point is, you go ahead and vote recommendations. Yeah, we think there should be amended whenever it's put on the one. Basically, you're in favor of whenever it comes up.
Does the timing of this public hearing affect anything if it goes to a spring town meeting? Are we still good?
I would say I would make the motion to endorse these articles at the town meeting that are brought forward. And then you're, you're covered.
Okay, so moved.
If it doesn't work out, if Brian researches it wrong, this is another public hearing down the road.
Just another public hearing. Those lines, that line is gonna what?
When I saw there was three.
That's why I'm just ecstatic tonight, because you've got three.
Three.
Let Don reveal you on the battery stuff.
In six minutes. There you go. Twenty twenty-four G. Introduction of the planning board members, Madison Pixley Chair, Christina Broador, Pat Coyne, David Demers, and John Matthews. Our statement of authority. The planning board is established under chapter forty-eight of the general laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with chapter forty-eight under the zoning bylaws of the town of Hampden. Chapter forty-one governing the submission and approval of plots of proposed subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing subdivision of land in Hampden, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hampden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six forty P M. in the townhouse, six twenty-five Main Street, Hampden, Mass. to amend the town of Hampden zoning bylaw to establish a temporary six-month moratorium on the construction and operation of battery energy storage systems, B E S S. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. For the board, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hampden Planning Board, published in the Wolverham Hampden Times on July twenty-fifth and August first, twenty twenty-four. We received no reports from other town departments or agencies. So, Don?
Well, basically, this is a zoning amendment. You have a mark on it for six months so that we can study the rules, regular rules and regulations we need for battery energy storage systems, which is the next iteration of the solar, the whole solar type thing.
Yep.
But we've had a couple of inquiries in town. There's been no real application or anything. But it would behoove us, I believe, to, to be able to get regulations in place that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the town. A particular concern is, of course, obviously, the protection of water in town and protection of property in the case of battery storage fire, which does occur. And we have a small fire department that really would not be able to handle any, any kind of serious fire that would protect the property. Also, the noise generated by the fans for the cooling of it and then the whole thing like the solar panels, the decommissioning and the cleanup, if there's something that's a problem with it. So there's, the attorney general has been pretty strict on not allowing moratoriums, but we felt that we could get at least a six-month moratorium based on what we need to do here. And I've collected a couple of zoning bylaws from where and from that way, and I believe Wolverham has their battery storage going well. And so that's what stands ready for the town meeting on the electoral, and see what happens.
Okay.
I gave you some information about battery storage fires and things like that.
Is there some reason it's six months versus nine months versus?
Yeah.
Six months to the next town meeting.
Okay.
That's why I figured. And then the attorney general is already they're very suspect of moratoriums because they think it's town's ways of blocking it, which they can under forty-eighty-three, I guess. So I thought six months would be reasonable, seeing so many towns we've gotten these already.
Yeah.
Cut and paste, I think, pretty much.
So we're gonna get to another E S S committee to put this bylaw together? Do you think that we have enough to do it from the other towns?
I think we ought to do it from the other towns.
Okay.
You know? It's pretty, most of the stuff is pretty straightforward.
And I think, I think if the committee puts forward an effort to do this, we should be able to get it done. Without, you know, a committee.
Without a committee?
Pardon me?
Without a committee?
Without a committee.
Okay.
I think there's enough information out there.
Mm-hmm.
As you said, Don, and I think we may want to add our own caveats to it.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the fact that Hampden, the, the fire department situation in Hampden.
Yep.
Okay. And the lack of water in Hampden. Okay, so some of that plays into this. So, yes, I believe, and, and I think we need to put it, revamp the whole solar bylaw because the, you know, the O N M operations and maintenance plan needs to include, you know, a, a testing schedule for these, you know, whether it's, you know, an insulation resistance, dielectric testing, things of that nature. That would help to ensure that from year to year and that schedule would be a year to year, a yearly thing.
Yep.
And again, the results would go either to the building department or for review from the town's selected engineering group for a review.
Okay.
So there's a lot to it. When I say a lot to it, meaning that revamping the solar bylaw to accommodate these
Batteries.
Battery, yeah.
Well, he's making a motion. Same motion that you may be for. You want to take that motion?
Oh, yeah. I make a motion to have ready for the annual town meeting a amended solar bylaw to include the battery stores, battery storage systems for the solar sites.
Would it just be the moratoriums for right now?
Oh, the moratorium. Yeah, moratorium too, okay.
Battery energy.
Oh.
That's battery energy.
Okay, so this is going to be this town meeting.
Right.
Sorry. Yep. Yep, sorry. Yep, so I make a motion.
Battery energy storage system support.
Support. Establish a temporary six-month moratorium. For battery storage systems. I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
That's recorded, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna get to work.
Are you gonna present this at town meeting?
Yeah.
Great. Done. Just some moratorium.
Okay.
Once
Sure. That's fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
He said, establish temporary six-month moratorium for battery energy source. That's just in case you can't hear him on the recording.
Huh? That makes sense?
Right, that's for fault.
You were talking about.
Yes. Here's where and
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
The town council sent those over.
Cool.
Thank you.
Close, public hearing twenty twenty-four G.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, hold on. Or just send it, or maybe I can find them. All right. So now we're gonna open our regular board meeting, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six fifty P M. We'll just go to our first one seventy-three Bennett Road site plan review for virtual law office.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. Steve, sir.
Go for it.
My name is David Burson. I'm a new resident to Hampden, Massachusetts, just having purchased a place in May, but moved in as of August, previously I was living in Canton, Massachusetts. And I'm looking for site plan review and administrative review approval for a home office occupation for a virtual law firm at one seventy-three Bennett Road, my primary residence. I'm a land use and zoning attorney. I primarily represent institutional clients. I don't have people coming to my, my office to meet face to face. Primarily, most of my meetings are either conducted via Zoom and then the actual meetings take place, as you guys are all aware, at night at different locations across the state and elsewhere. So that being said, I don't have a need for excess parking at one seventy-three Bennett Road. However, there is sufficient space to accommodate additional parking that were requiring people to file all those conflicting requirements. And there is significant parking at one seventy-three Bennett Road. That being said, I'm more than happy to answer any question you may have. There's no point in checking upstairs. Um, that being said, I'm more than happy to answer any question when we have. There's no plans that can interfere your operations. I'm not requesting any approvals for a sign at this time. Um, primarily just the, I provided a a building footprint right now to show. Provide a new office for myself. And that is, that is my application, so I'm hoping you will look favorably upon it.
Is there an actual physical space in your home that is your office?
Yes, so if you look at the the symbol, yeah. Entry off of the kitchen, which is now officially an office to be closed off the door and created another door off the hallway.
Yeah.
More of a total separate space. Expect there to be any nuisances. I'm not gonna be creating it. That's not what the computer generates. Relatively clean. What's that? So we, we moved the laundry room down to the basement.
We kept ours in the basement. We refinished our house and redid our house, and I regret that. I wish we had moved it upstairs. I don't have a nice basement.
Yeah, that's true.
Give a laundry chute. We had one. Stairs bathroom, we covered it. Another regret. One of my kids or both of them would have probably tried to go down. Really? Any questions, concerns?
Questions?
A move that we approve?
Oh, yes, sir.
No, I can, I can now really rate for the most part, so regardless of where I'm located. Although don't turn for an occupation, so.
Okay, um, I move that we approve the application for home occupation for Mr. Pearson. Person at one seventy three Bennett Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
I live behind you. I live behind you. I live on Glendale side. It's, it's probably, it's right in there somewhere.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I turn. I don't have any more minutes. Yeah, second, second one, bunch right here.
People could say forever ago. I know, I'm. Coming?
Four minutes, that's minutes, and now there's three.
Did they ever respond to you about the help?
Yes, she's coming in Monday for an interview.
Twenty-four minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. I commit the motion for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing minutes, or like?
Public hearing, right?
Uh, public hearing, sorry.
Right, I need to see all this. Read them.
Now, I don't want these left down.
I think I'm doing twenty-six one, because I didn't.
Okay.
I don't see anything. Like to make a motion for, to approve the minutes for June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think we're.
I, I just had one thing I wanted to bring up. The accessory dwelling.
Yes.
The law was passed by the state, and we've got people that are interested in doing this. And our bylaw doesn't really coincide with the state bylaw, but I know we have to go by the more stricter of the two. But there's a lot of issues that I think have to be discussed in talking with the building inspector and the board of health. So, um, like setbacks, how far can this building be from the building? Reasonably regulate side setbacks, what if the lots existing non-conformant, does that mean they can't put an accessory apartment? You know, there's a, there's a lot of open issues.
Okay.
They nine hundred or nine hundred is allowed, I think it's eight hundred. Just a bunch of issues, and they don't have to require special permit in the bylaw. So, we're gonna have them come to the working board for a site plan review, or just go right to the building inspector for a building permit. We don't know what the process is gonna be, so I, I don't know what to tell these people. I mean, it's whether or not we want to do a site plan review, I think.
Okay, I'm saying.
Which we have from the state.
Yeah, so you gotta add that to your bylaw, I don't mean to.
No, no, but I'm, I'm just wondering, these people are coming in, and I don't know what.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've had six people.
Yeah, a lot of people are, and there's a lot that are here already, like.
And I mean, I, but I put thirty-seven of them on my.
That's another question, what do people do, subdivide their properties now?
Understand. So, because our bylaws also say you have to have a minimum of, you know, two hundred feet of frontage, and then, let's say, an acre and a half, you know what I'm saying, unless you have uh, eight acres, uh, eight acres and sixty feet of frontage, or if you're on four. So there's a lot of def- definitions that will need to be defined in your, in your bylaw.
I know, that's.
So that's something to think about, I'm saying you don't need to do it tonight, but, um, you may want to think about how this is gonna lay out in the bylaw, too, would it be under six point three point five, I don't know, I, I haven't.
Yeah.
I haven't looked at the bylaws in a long time.
Well, there's also in seven point two, there's maximum percent building coverage of land, including accessory buildings.
So.
I think the ADU would fall, be included in that.
You do, is that reasonably regulating?
I think it would be.
Maximum percentage?
I don't think so.
I, I don't know.
Building cover.
I don't know how.
It says accessory buildings.
Yeah, so, but it's not an ADU, this is all new stuff. So, in other words, I haven't finished reading the whole thing from, from the governor.
I have to read that, too.
So, again, I'm, I'm just in the process of getting all this information and up to speed. It's gonna be a big process, it's gonna be a rather involved process.
Yes.
Depends on how, because you have to go, just as you said, the number of, you know, square feet per eight, or per land use, there's some of that. Um, there's also, if you go to, um, the substandard lots, you'll also have to, there is a certain amount of land that has to be appropriated.
From the front of the street back, yeah.
Now, do you want to be able to put an ADU there? Um, so, I, I don't mean to throw the wrench into the well-oiled machine, but these are some of the questions that.
But what do we do with somebody who's calling us now, asking about this? Do they go for a building permit? We don't have a process for site plan.
So the, the real, the real start would be with Wendell, the building inspector. Okay, because the plan, one of the plans is, is you have to submit a, a set of plans. So, I can do a ninety, nine hundred square foot house, but now what if I, and this is just a thought, now if I have a basement, okay, so there's another nine hundred square feet, is that living space? Or is it just nine hundred square feet of aggregate? So, you know, in other words, is it a square footprint, nine hundred?
Yeah.
Footprint, or is it nine hundred square feet of living area? Those are, those are questions, those, I, nobody, I don't have those answers. And I, I believe that the state does not have those answers either. So, in other words, if I was gonna build a nine hundred square foot, and then I went to my basement and put my, my bedroom in, uh.
Kitchen in there.
Maybe my bedroom and kitchen and on the first floor is, so now I need two forms of egress, really, to, for the code.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's a lot to it.
So, but you said for the code, building code.
Building code, that's why. That's why I said it should start with Wendell.
I agree.
And Wendell should look at that and look at the plot plan.
Until we get.
Till we get.
At our bylaw.
Yes, I don't mean to throw it.
No, I just don't know what to do, say to this person, so.
But he would, he would follow the existing bylaw right now, um, to accommodate it. That's my recommendation, now I don't know what town council feels.
Yeah.
I think, personally, I think we need guidance from town council.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you want to read it.
And we know that.
This is.
It's, it's a state order, so it's across the state, excuse me, so that's why I said we should probably look to have some guidance from town council, and what I would probably do is make a list of all my questions um, that I have, and then we all put them together in a big jumble puzzle. Okay, and, you know, ferret it out and send it off to town council.
Yeah.
So, that's my.
Well, I was talking, I, I only say the last thing, but I was talking with board of health, and another question is, can you tie the accessory dwelling unit into the existing?
It doesn't say.
Septic or well, we don't know, is that allowed to, to, to do that?
So now, if I do, so one of my things is, is that, and I've, I've talked to people about it, is here, here if I have the house, you know, my primary dwelling unit, and the accessory, do I tie into the well, well, right now, if I tie into the same well, now, does it become a public water supply? Okay, so does it fall into regulations that it has to be tested every month? Things of that nature, now if I tie into the septic, is the septic going to be able to handle? So, but maybe I have another septic, where's the septic and where's the reserve for that septic? In other words, if that one goes bad.
A lot of thinking.
I have a reserved area set aside. So it, it can get quite, quite involved.
All right, so here's what I think we should do. Um, I think everybody, if you have the time between now and our next meeting, is try to get familiar with the new law that was passed, and we come back with a list of questions that we'll compile and send to town council, and in the meantime, any applicants will send to Wendell.
Which, which one is it, so I can write it down?
I, I have the cheat sheet given to me by the town administrator, did I give that to you, the two pages? I think I sent it to you, and John?
I'm sorry, it's two pages, go ahead, Julian.
I was wondering, is that sufficient, you really don't have to read this entire.
Well, people can read what they want.
Right, but I, he gave me what was pertinent, yes, I could send it out to everybody.
Okay, or, send that out, it doesn't say much, because all it is, is the two pages out of the whole document.
Exactly.
Think it's a hundred and seventy-seven pages, the whole document?
Yeah.
Something to that nature.
Hundred and twenty-six pages.
One twenty-six, okay, hundred and twenty-six pages, so. Yeah, and it's only two pages out of that hundred and twenty-six, so, um, yeah.
So, get familiar as they want to, they don't, I don't expect people to read a hundred and twenty-six pages.
No, no, no. Unless you have no life, like I do, but you can read all.
Then we should let John read it, John, read it, report back.
Yeah. No, I, I, I've read some of it.
I've read it a little bit, but I haven't gotten.
It's very, uh, weeds. Yeah, and that's why I say town council.
Agreed.
Bring the questions up.
Well, that's why I'd like for us to be able to compile our questions together, and then.
The questions you had tonight were all good ones, too. Yeah.
Do, not to change, but do you think we should, before we do all that, just through a general question out to town council, saying we've approved our, our accessory, I forget what we called it, I can't remember what we called it, accessory apartment?
Yeah.
As an attached building, and now the state's approved this, how, how do we go for, see what they say, how do we go forward from there?
Yeah, do that.
You could.
Just to give us a starting point.
I think that's a good idea.
Before we do all that work.
Sure, and, you know, what I do is use that to open the door.
Right, that's what I was thinking, let them do.
Say we're coming up with a list of questions.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, she's probably not gonna get back to us by then anyway, so.
I don't know, Pat, what do you think?
I don't think so, there's quite a bit there, maybe at a high level question, she could answer.
Well, that's what I figured, just an overall question.
I'm thinking you're end, gonna end up going to Jesse. Well, Jen, the reason being that Jesse is, um,
Orland.
He's, he's, I think it's on East Hampton's planning board.
Yeah, he's the chair.
He's the chair.
And he was, yeah.
Planning board, so he's gonna be dealing with the same questions.
Yeah, true.
So.
All right, all right.
That's my feeling.
You prove it.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna get something generic from Rose, which isn't a bad thing, you know?
Starting point, right?
But you're, you're looking for some details, and I think.
All right. You good, John? Ha, good, I'm good, all right, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven.
Well, seconded.
Thank you.
Jane found my old badge, huh?
Yes. She saved it.
Yeah, I had a couple.
Yes.
For me?
Thank you.